Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 15. I got the wrong one pulled up there. September 16th edition of the Lexington City Council. I'm glad you all are here and I look forward to the business for this evening. First item of business is if you will stand, enjoy me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all, and thank you all for embracing our mask request. We'll encourage members of City Council, if you wish to speak, when you wish to speak, feel free to lower your masks so that folks can hear us. I also ask that you use your microphones and pull them down to your mouth and speak clearly so folks can hear what you have to say. Also invite people as they do speak to City Council, our microphone up there, if you'll pull it down so that we can hear what you have to say as well. We have consideration of the agenda. I know there was addition from Ms. Strawn for Rana report. If we can add that under Reports and Communications, item number eight. Is there anything else that folks would like to add to the agenda? Hearing none, we will approve the agenda with that addition and move into Proclamations. As many of you know, from the banner on Main Street, it is Constitution Week, and invite everyone to join us in recognizing that. Tomorrow at about 1:00-ish, I think the library, Rockbridge Regional Library, opens up at 1:00. There are folks gathering to acknowledge and celebrate Constitution Week there, and City Council was invited by the organizer, Sharon Littley. But I'd like to offer the following proclamation. Recognizing September 17 through 23, 2021 is Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which still commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, by the virtue of the authority vested in the city of Lexington, we do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. And witness thereof, I've set my hand as Mayor of Lexington. So again, I encourage everyone to recognize tomorrow through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and if you're so inclined, come celebrate at the Rockbridge Regional Library. The next item on our agenda is Presentations, and while there's nothing listed on there, for those of you who have, I'd like to call on Chad Coffey, who's our new Director of Ra-Ro. And Chad, welcome. Chad, if you could, pull that microphone down, and there's a button that'll turn red. There you go. Perfect.
Just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity. I'm excited to be working in the area. Just a brief update with Ra-Ro. Currently, our fall sports have taken off full tilt. We currently have about 478 youth participating. Lexington's numbers are about 40% of that, so that's pretty good. So we're excited about that, and hopefully, moving forward, we can continue to grow those numbers. The second thing that I wanted to mention, some of the students will see a flyer coming around. We're offering a community event on October the 2nd at Brewbaker, just some different fun games and activities. We're going to kick off our winter registration that day. We'll have a survey for the public to get some feedback in how we can grow, how we can improve. Just trying to make, it's a three-hour window, 11 to 2 in the middle of the day. You can come for a few minutes or for a long time. It's entirely up. We'd love to see you all, and hopefully, we'll have a good turnout that day. Thank you.
Chad, thank you for being with us, and congratulations on your selection to lead Ra-Ro. Good-looking shirt, and look forward to the great work that you'll do in our community with children of all ages. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearings. The first public hearing, we have three. The first is a public hearing in consideration of emergency declaration and resolution. And would, this particular, I'll remind myself and the public that this is a measure that City Council asked the city attorney to draft for this meeting to give us the flexibility, should things get worse with COVID, that we could meet virtually. Our desire is to meet in person, if at all possible, but this gives us that flexibility. And Jared, did you want to introduce any of this?
I think you did a great job. That's really the impetus for it. But as things have changed over the past year in terms of public bodies being able to meet electronically or virtually, the General Assembly sort of, originally back in March of last year, was sort of, everybody, I think, was going by the seat of their pants. They've now, in the interim, sort of codified how local public bodies can meet electronically. The key to that, though, is there has to be an emergency declared, either statewide or a local emergency. So that's a threshold declaration that has to be made by the local governing body to allow that governing body and all the governing bodies below it to be able to meet virtually. So that would be the issue tonight, is whether or not Jim and his role as Director of Emergency Management will declare a local emergency, and then City Council, as the governing body of the city, will ratify that declaration. City of Lexington would then be under a local state of emergency, and City Council, School Board, Planning Commission, all of those entities could then meet virtually for the duration of that local emergency. Last year, we had to keep redoing the, recertifying the resolution every 60 days. That's been sort of done away with. It's now the duration of the local emergency. And as Frank said, this would allow those bodies to meet virtually, but wouldn't require it. So this is essentially just teeing up for City Council, putting this on the table to allow these entities to decide whether or not they want to meet virtually. Whereas it stands now, there is no option to meet virtually. Everyone has to be in person, just as they always were pre-March 2020. But this would give both City Council and the other bodies the ability to choose to meet virtually if they feel it wise and necessary to do so.
Thank you, Jared. I think of this as everyone who drove here tonight likely has a spare tire in their car, hope to never need it, but in the event that we do, it's there. At this time, at 7:09, I would like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this topic? And hearing none, still at 7:09, like to close the public hearing and ask for Council's consideration.
I move to approve the declaration of local emergency. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Strawn. Ms. Alexander? Have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. The next public hearing is an item, hearing consideration of requests from Harold and Sally Felt at 516 South Main Street to adjust a property line. Arnie?
Good evening to you all. We do have a preliminary subdivision 2021-03 for 516 and 514 South Main Streets. The property is owned by Mr. Felt, Mr. and Mrs. Felt and the estate of John Doan. You see the location map on page one of your staff report, and it didn't show up completely on the GIS, but the property, I'm going to say in front and back. So the Felts own 516 South Main, which is right up and adjacent to South Main, and the Doan estate is actually a U-shaped property currently. There's a driveway that goes back to the main part, and then there's a little five-foot strip that comes all the way back up to South Main. And that's shown better on the next page of your staff report, which is the, it says Boundary Line Adjustment Survey. So the portion that is in question is that little hatched area, which is five foot wide by, I believe, 227 some feet in length. Again, that portion is currently with 514 South Main, and the request is to do a boundary line adjustment, so that five-foot wide strip ends up being part of the property at 516 South Main owned by the Felts. The boundary line adjustment meets the zoning requirements for parcels in the R1 zoning district, and staff does make a recommendation that the preliminary be approved as submitted. Planning Commission held a public hearing last week, and they unanimously recommend approval as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Arnie. Members of Council, have any questions for Arnie? Very good. Thank you, sir. At this time, it's 7:11, I would like to open the public hearing for consideration of the request from the Felts. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this topic? Seeing none, and it being 7:12, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for Council's consideration.
I move to approve preliminary subdivision application PS 2021-03 for the adjustment of boundary lines between 516 South Main and 514 South Main, in accordance with the Boundary Line Adjustment Survey completed by Greenforce Surveys as submitted by the applicant.
A second?
I have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Felts, for being here. You're welcome to stay and speak if you'd like.
I should hear it for you. Thank Arnie for your enable assistance.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing in consideration of a request from the city of Lexington to subdivide the city-owned 5.8 acre, 5.8 plus acre parcel along Spotswood Drive. Arnie?
And this is a subdivision request before you. On the first part of the page there, or the location map, you see a little area outlined in red, and the larger parcel that is in yellow outlined. Those are the two parcels that the city acquired, became to own those two pieces, primarily for Spotswood going through, and then also for some additional property. So what we try to show you is just the area outlined in red, which was a purchasing of a parcel. I believe there was, I learned at the public hearing from the Planning Commission, that there may have been a house on that. There was then subsequently moved to another spot, again, for Spotswood Drive to go through. The 5.8 acre parcel, again, outlined in yellow, is really the important parcel for this evening, because there's a request by the city to subdivide that property. In 1986, the city acquired the property, and shortly thereafter, if I have the timeline correct, Spotswood Drive was put in, and then the Rescue Squad building was also constructed in, I believe, 86, 87. At that time, we have not found any record that the property was actually subdivided. So those things occurred without a formal preliminary subdivision process coming before council and final approval for a final plat. So that's why before this evening, as you know, you have a contract with Ra-Ra to sell the Rescue Squad building parcel to them, and before that can occur, the property needs to be subdivided. While we're doing that, we might as well go ahead and clear up all the other parcels, which is only four, so that those are legally subdivided as well. And on the first page, we did not include, it's more of an outline of the 5.8 acre parcel and the retraction or outlining of this Spotswood Drive, we did not include all of the parcels to be subdivided. That's actually shown on your next page, which is the plat of the proposed subdivision. We should have probably highlighted that a little bit in a different color than yellow, because it doesn't read very well, but you will see four parcels specifically. So there's the one parcel that's closest to the cemetery, there's the one parcel that is right in the crook sort of Taylor Street and Spotswood Drive, that's the smallest parcel, the parcel for the Rescue Squad building that will be sold to Ra-Ra, and then the remainder of the property. So we're really only asking for the subdivision of four parcels this evening. There were, or I should say, the four parcels meet the minimum lot requirements, the zoning ordinance, and staff recommends that the preliminary plat be approved as submitted. Planning Commission held a public hearing, and they have a unanimous recommendation for approval at 7:00. We had about four people speak. We normally provide you with the Planning Commission minutes, but this was a quick turnaround. I believe it was four persons who spoke at the Planning Commission hearing, and we had at least three or four people stop by the office to look at the application and for additional information. That's all I have for our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Arnie. Members of Council, have any questions? Mr. Alligood? Mr. Alligood, if you could pull that microphone down a little closer?
And move my mask.
Please. Thank you.
And how's this? I was at the Planning Commission meeting and heard what was happening there, and I read also the legal opinion report from Mr. Jenkins, and read that, and I was very informed by that and whatnot. And over the years, this Spotswood property and the cemetery issue has been a point of discussion quite a bit. And, for example, I cited in the meeting that we recently had at the Planning Commission that when I bought my cemetery lot, I was told by city workers that that whole piece was going to be cemetery property. Now admittedly, the cemetery manager, who happened to be, I want to give him credit, was Roy Smith, who since passed away, and there's a Roy Smith parking lot named in his honor and whatnot. But Roy Smith was the cemetery manager at the time, and he assured me that that Spotswood property on the other side of Spotswood was to be the cemetery, which doesn't work out to be the way we're talking about it now. And in reading Mr. Jenkins' statement, his legal opinion, one of the pieces of information that he referred to that wasn't in the report, and that's my basis for the question, was when that property, and it was the McCoy property, was transferred to the Lexington Cemetery Board. I'm assuming there was a document that did that, and I didn't see the document as part of that report. And the concern that many have had over the years is kind of a rhetorical question, but maybe it's a real question as well. And that is, if the property from the McCoy estate was transferred to the Cemetery Board, doesn't that seem like there was an intent, and we can talk about intent in a minute, that that property was to become cemetery property? Otherwise, why give it to the Cemetery Board in there? And then later, according to Mr. Jenkins' report, the Cemetery Board transferred by way of court order of the property to the city so that the city could do with it, what it chose to do and whatnot. And so the open question in part is that question about intent. Now, it's also my understanding that intent's a nice thing, but if it isn't in the four corners, written down in the four corners of a document, that it doesn't count in there. It's merely a nice thing to say and whatnot. And I think that's where we are. But it's still an open question on the part of many old-timers, I'm going to say, in Lexington. I've been here slightly more than 30 years. I'm not quite an old-timer, but you could look at me and judge for yourself, but there are many people who are in there, and I had a good friend of mine who since passed away talking about the point where we reached geezer hood. And I think I'm there, but, and there are many people who remember that issue with the McCoy property and the cemetery. And so I'm just wondering what happened with that McCoy property. It's not written down in our documents there. And I was wondering if that document, and I guess I would ask Mr. Jenkins, whether he came across that document.
I did find the, I believe it was 1969 deed from the McCoys to the trustees of the cemetery. I attached that. That was included in the PDF, I think, I originally sort of sent to council. I'm not sure what got printed out, but we did find that deed, and there was no restriction whatsoever. It was just a conveyance to the trustees. And as you say, we can't speculate as to the intent, which is precisely why. If it's not in the document, we don't, sort of, there's no restriction, was no restriction in that conveyance to the cemetery, the trustees in 69, and then again, no restriction in the deed of conveyance in 1986 to the city itself. So, you know, you could presume that the intent was from the McCoys giving it or selling it to the trustees of the cemetery, that it would be the cemetery property, but we don't know, there were no restrictions. So in theory, the cemetery trustees could have sold the property to someone else for, you know, basically turned around a profit to then put back into the cemetery operations. So I think that's at least a fair of an assumption as, you know, we're going to bury people on this property. But without anything written down or recorded, there's really no way to know exactly what that intent was. And I think the clearest indication we have is the 1986 court case and the conveyance to the city, which was free of all restrictions, and the part of the petition submitted to the court specifically said that it was to support the continued development of the city, not in any way to, that would have been the place to reference the expansion of the cemetery in that letter, and instead of doing that, they referenced the continued development of the city. So I think that's pretty clear evidence that certainly in 1986 going forward, now obviously whatever cemetery employees or city employees might have said at the time, you know, that's sort of informative, and they may have thought in their minds that's what it was going to be, but, you know, there's no way to be bound by those actual statements at this point.
Right. I agree about can't be bound by that. And I raised the point because it's a point that's been raised to me several times, and I just wanted to put it on the table, out in the open, that this discussion has been held, and that the consideration is what it is at this point, and if it's not written down, if the, you know, good intentions, if they're not in the four corners of that piece of paper, then they're just good intentions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alligood. Mr. Ziegler?
Two questions. Just to clear up how the newspaper, someone shared that the property was sold for a dollar because, Jared, can you shed some light on why all real estate contracts say property is conveyed for a dollar? Is there any, because your memo shared that fair market, you know, we paid, it was paid for.
Yeah, you can't really infer anything for a purchase price from what's listed on the deed. They're typically, and almost, I want to say, all the ones we record for private entities or for anyone, it's for $20 and other valuable consideration. And part of that is, so you can't, in some cases, people don't want everyone to know what the purchase price is. But that's typically now, I think, the accepted practice, is to put some, you know, de minimis dollar amount on the actual transaction, and then that other valuable consideration is really the meat of the issue. We tried to find from the documents we had what the actual purchase price was, what the city actually paid for it, but it wasn't on the deed. You can, sometimes, when the deeds are recorded, the taxes, the recording taxes are also listed on the deed, and you can sort of extrapolate from that how much the, what the purchase price was. But in this case, since both entities, the trustees and the city are nonprofit, no recording taxes were paid, so you can't use that. And there was nothing in the court file to give us the actual dollar amount. So we may be able to go back to the minutes of the 86 meetings, and I would think at some point it was discussed during those meetings, but at this point in time, I'm not aware of what that, the actual purchase price was, other than the representation to the court that the city paid fair market value for it at the time.
And then also, I guess this property was slated to be developed in 2011, and I think some of my colleagues were on council at that time. Did you play this same tune at that time, and was this discussed, if it was permissible, and so on? I mean, is this kind of deja vu for you all?
I think that's directed at Mr. Smith and Ms. Alexander. If you all would like to comment.
The discussion of whether or not that parcel in question was restricted for cemetery use was discussed, and I think we came to the same resolution, that there's nothing legally stating that it is. So yeah, we did clear the air on that 10 years ago.
I think we cleared the air, but I don't think some of the citizens did. I think they still felt that there was a different outcome of it, but, you know, we legally went through the steps necessary, just like this.
And to confirm, Mr. Jenkins, the deeds and all that information, I think is on our website with your memo for anyone who would like to review that, and those are all courthouse documents. That's of record information, including that drafted by W.O. Roberts in 1986.
That's right. The court file, the deeds, all of that's public record. Anyone from the public with any interest in it can go over to the Park's office and pull the deeds, or ask for the court file, and the clerk will provide it.
And look on the city website, and/or look on the city website. I found it there as well, and was very appreciative of being able to find it there, which meant anybody else could. If I could, anybody else could.
Any other members of council have any questions for staff before we hold the public hearing? Arnie, if you can leave that microphone on for, I think we have some folks that want to speak. Okay. Let's see here. I know, Ms. Griever, you wanted to speak. If you'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing, and invite you to come and be the first to speak. And is there anyone else who wants to speak to this issue?
Possibly.
Very good. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Brenda Griever. I am fourth or fifth generation, Rockbridge County. As I said last week, Ms. Ada McCoy was friends with my grandmother. They were Houston Street neighbors. My grandmother told me many times that Ms. Ada had given land to Stonewall Jackson Cemetery so that the peoples of the area would have more land to be buried on. After last week's meeting of hitting a Stonewall, basically that it belongs to the city and they'll do whatever they want to with it, I decided to go research to see what happened between 1969 and now. In 1969, Mrs. McCoy sold the land to Stonewall Jackson Cemetery for $10, not to the city of Lexington. In 1971, the mayor and the city council appointed themselves as trustee for the cemetery for the sole purpose of making a conveyance of said real estate to the city of Lexington. That is stated in the deed. I have a copy. At that time, nothing was done to change the status of the title, which to me is just sneaking, we snuck it by you, it's ours now, ha, 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 y'all don't even know it. In 1986, it was deemed necessary by the city to put the land that Ms. McCoy specifically gave the cemetery to the city to facilitate future development of the land for which they paid the sum of a dollar. The city put up the building for the research squad, which has since housed Ra-Ra, and they also ran Spotswood to Houston Street. Now they are wanting to put up a four-level apartment building for the revenue. They might have done it legally, but it's sneaking, underhanded, and immoral. No one in their right mind would give land to a municipality to sell for hundreds of thousands of dollars. If they wanted someone to do that, Mrs. McCoy would have did it to family or friends. It is quite obvious that the entire string of events, to totally disregard the woman's intents and wishes, was their plan to begin with. Most of the local residents, like me, thought that the land that was left was still part of the cemetery. There has not been any consideration for the residents or future residents to have a place to be buried, which was Mrs. McCoy's concern. The powers that be- The powers that be wonder why the people do not trust them? This is a perfect example. They have schemed for decades to get what they wanted, not what the people nor the grantor of the land wanted. The city should, for all intents, zone it back to the cemetery and stop abusing their power. And this would show that they were for the people they represent, not just themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Griever. Appreciate you sharing that information with us and being here.
And I do have a copy of all the deeds if anybody wants to look at them.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh.
You can leave it, leave it on. Yeah. Lock it down. Yeah. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this topic this evening? Mr. Sars. And I apologize, I should have asked Ms. Griever. I think she stated, but if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My current address, my name is David Jefferson Sars. My current address is 714 East 21st Street, Buena Vista, Virginia. However, my grandfather bought a piece of land on Houston Street, 117 Houston, in the 20s when he organized Lexington ARP Church, which was later named after him. My family was raised there. When my father married my mother after World War II, he bought the house across the street at 120 Houston Street in 1947. He was a brave and fearless man, since his grandmother-in-law lived across the street. At any rate, I've watched Houston Street, I recently moved two years ago to Buena Vista, and I've watched Houston Street go from a friendly town street to a thoroughfare. If any of you spend any time on Houston Street and try to cross the street, good luck. Cars speed up and down that street. I wonder if any consideration has been given to what will occur with the traffic situation, given the, where the hospital lies. My father, John Henry Sars, fought for years to try to get a three-way stop on Houston and Taylor without any success, though some other neighborhoods seemed to get them without any priority. My father was on the cemetery committee, and he believed firmly until the day he died that it was an understanding that that land was to be used for the cemetery. I would suggest that you go back into the cemetery records and minutes, if possible, and see if that is indeed true. I hope that you do not make a hasty decision in this matter. You have opened up and become more inclusive of the cemetery with renaming of Oak Grove. I would suggest that you give the people you have enabled to now, and I totally approve with it, access to be buried in that cemetery, that there be some land for them to be buried in. That is the only place for the cemetery to go. There is no other land. So I would hope that you would consider the traffic issues and consider what that act will do to the residents of Houston Street, where I lived for most of my life as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sars. Appreciate your information and insights as to the history of Houston Street. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this topic this evening? We'll give one last opportunity. Hearing none at 7:34, we'll close the public hearing and would ask for council's consideration.
I move to approve preliminary subdivision application PS 2021-04 for the subdivision of the 5.8 acre parcel on Spotswood Drive owned by the city of Lexington into four parcels with tax map numbers 29-1-30, 29-1-30A, 29-1-31, 29-1-31A, in accordance with the plat completed by Trout Land Surveying, Inc., as submitted by the applicant.
Second.
Have a motion and thank you, Mr. Smith, for a second. Hearing none. I would ask for a roll call vote or?
Just one point discussion.
Certainly.
What we're talking about now is approving the subdivision.
Correct.
And that's all?
Correct. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none with roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And to your, your point, Mr. Alligood, the, this subdivides and cleans up the boundaries, it is not determinant of the future of the 2.2, or the acreage that's open behind the homes on Houston Street and between the building that RARO is currently occupying. And the contract to purchase with RARO proceeds. Next item on our agenda is consideration of minutes. They were provided in your packet. And unless there's any objection, we will approve those as presented. They are approved. Next item is citizens' remarks and comments. And we invite members of public to, to join us and to share with us their insights and ideas. And the two folks that had signed up on the sheet here have already spoken. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council this evening? Hearing none. We will move on with the consent agenda. It's there for your consideration, council.
I'm going to make one minor correction, and then it's the 2021 Christmas Parade, but I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. And roll call vote. Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Strawn?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is unfinished business. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. In regard to the Spotswood update, just want to note that as indicated here earlier, the action taken earlier, RARO will now be able to close on the property, the Piovano parcel itself. And they have indicated they would schedule that closing as soon as possible. I also would want to note that all organizations that had previously been occupying the building have now moved out, so, or been notified to move out. So RARO has also been informed of that, as have the organizations, and that would take place September 30th. RARO, of course, can negotiate the opportunity for those organizations to stay, but that would be with RARO now, no longer with the city. The only other item I have of note is that I've had no, other parties indicate an interest in any development of the remaining parcel is there. The original parties who have indicated an interest, from my understanding, are still interested in our preparing proposals. But that's all I have to share at this point.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for the city manager, right, regarding this topic? Hearing none, we'll jump into reports and communications. Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith?
Blue Ridge Resource Authority met on, on Monday interim director Fred Dudley gave a summary of what's been going on out there. We also hired a new administrative assistant. I, I went out there Tuesday to take a look around because I hadn't been out there in a while. If you want to see an amazing demonstration of excavation, Cell 2 construction is something to be, something to behold. The amount of dirt that's been moved to get that, that section ready to take on solid waste is, is, is something else. We also are entering into negotiations for gas and water monitoring and I think that's, that's about it. Any questions? The Cell 1, that is the cell that was constructed after the closing of the old landfill, is, is getting pretty close to full up and we should be switching over to Cell 2 as soon as we get the go-ahead from DQ once construction's finished. And that should be in a couple of months.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Would also add to that report that their committee of Dan Lyons and Bob Wells is reviewing applications for the permanent position of director and anticipate they will be bringing forward some recommendations at our next meeting. Mr. Ziegler?
Is it fair to ask what the projection of the lifespan is of Cell 2, just for the public?
I asked Fred that question when I was out there, but I believe he told me, I'm going from memory, I think eight to 10 years. The whole landfill is expected to have a total of 40 to 50.
Ms. Alligood?
With regard to people having an opportunity to view and behold the view out there, I've seen it, and I mentioned at a previous meeting, that it is spectacular, no doubt about it. What arrangements would people need to make to go there and have a look?
I would just call the director Fred Dudley before we find a permanent director and, either for the public or, or this body, just to get a, get a tour of the facility. He'd be happy to. He encourages interest and participation and gaining knowledge of, of that facility. And I didn't realize, you know, it's been probably six months since I've been out there and the transformation it has taken on since we were out there with Cell 2 construction is, it's something. The amount of dirt that's been moved is, is incredible.
No, I need to go see again.
And then he took me to the top of the old landfill where you get a 360 of, of, of the area. And the odor was down that day, so it wasn't too unpleasant, but it was a clear day and just magnificent, magnificent view shot up there. That's, that's worth the trip in itself.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, council, for the questions. Main Street Lexington, Ms. Strawn?
Yeah, Main Street, Main Street Lexington met on Tuesday, September 14th. And the Gateway Triangle Garden fundraising has begun and the goal is $50,000. This year's science festival and maker fair will be a take-home project like it was last year. You can register online at mainstreetlexington.org. And the bags will be delivered to area elementary schools on September 30th and April, oh, sorry, October 1st. The project is for students in grades two through five. Downtown trick-or-treating will be on Friday, October 29th, after school from 3:30 to 5:00 PM. And last week, Main Street Lexington and the downtown merchants hosted a very successful Get Downtown event for about 400 first-year WNL students. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Strawn. Yes, it was, I got to participate with my employer Cornerstone, and it was interesting to see people that happened to be visiting Lexington and as they saw the students covering the town, it was, it was a lot of fun and a neat, neat opportunity. Ms. Strawn, the planning commission?
The planning commission met on Thursday, September 9th, and we unanimously approved the two preliminary subdivision plats that we addressed earlier tonight. And the planning commission unanimously approved an entrance corridor certificate of appropriateness for new signs for trendy Southern creations, which is at 125 Walker Street. We also continued our discussion of the small cell text amendments. That's all I have.
Any questions for Ms. Strawn? Hearing none, regional tourism. Mr. Ayers?
Thank you. The board met yesterday and it was a short meeting, but I do have a couple items to share. First, I think last month I neglected to mention that Tourism had hired a new visitor services manager. This is the position that Marie Plank previously held and then was held by Denise Nays, who departed a few months ago to pursue another opportunity. The new visitor services manager is Holly Rogers, and she joined the staff in early August, and she's been a great new addition. She previously worked for the community services board and knows the area very well, having grown up in Rockbridge. Let's see, following on that, that article in Southern Living a couple, or last month, this month, in the most recent issue of National Equestrian Lifestyle Magazine Untact, there is a beautiful seven-page article on Lexington and the Virginia Horse Center. Regional Tourism assisted with editorial support and provided the photos for this piece. Some local items, local things to do, which I'm very excited about. Both, the VMI Museum is now open to the public from nine to five, Thursday through Monday. And they've also resumed their 30-minute cadet guided walking tours of the post. Folks interested in doing that should meet at noon in the lobby of the VMI Museum Memorial Hall, second floor. And the Washington and Lee Museums and galleries have also reopened to the public. Their hours are Thursdays and Fridays from 11:00 to 6:00 and Saturdays from 10:00 to 5:00. And unless anybody has any questions, that's it.
Thank you, Dennis. Don't appear to be any questions. RARO. I'll just be brief because Chad Coffey shared some of the highlights, but just to reiterate, October 2nd from 11:00 to 2:00 at Brewbaker Field will be the RARO Day, kind of a celebration. But also, I'll just highlight the fact that, you know, each season we rely on so much cooperation and so many volunteers. And of course, this fall is like all other seasons. The grass does not stop growing. And so all the municipalities, the school districts, everyone is assisting and our own staff taking care of fields, facilities. And the controlled chaos of a Saturday morning at the Moory River Field of like hundreds of kids playing soccer, it's a thing to behold. So if anyone wants to watch some good seven and eight-year-olds kick a ball around, come over between nine and 11, nine and 12 on a Saturday morning. Sounds like firsthand experience with the daughter. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Ms. Alexander, threshold?
No report this week.
Thank you, ma'am. Moory Service Authority, Mr. Alligood?
Yeah, there was no MSA meeting this month yet. It will occur on the last Tuesday of the month. One effect, though, of MSA is the pre-programmed rate increases for water and sewer. And I noticed that the city of Lexington notified all of its customers that there will be a five and a half percent increase. And this is part of the pre-programmed MSA rate increases, which are ongoing. I always say ongoing. And no, no sign of slowing down. There is a, the regular MSA board meeting the last Tuesday at 5:00 o'clock at the Rockbridge County Administration Building. And on October 12th will be the second meeting for hearing the consultants' report on what to do to modernize the water treatment operations. And right now, we're still hearing numbers in the neighborhood of $20 million, which of course will be paid for by the users, Lexington and Rockbridge County. That's all the report.
Thank you, Mr. Alligood. Water is certainly not free. Rana, Ms. Strawn?
Sure. Rana met on Tuesday, September 14th. And as reported in Wednesday's News Gazette, the county, BARK, and Rana applied for a $10.8 million VADI grant to extend, extend broadband service to about 2,300 households and businesses in the county. And to put that into perspective, the original Rana grant was about $10, $10 million. And this build will lay 276 miles of new fiber to the door. The grant requires a 45% match, so the county is providing 1.9 million and BARK is contributing over 8 million. The Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission provided technical assistance and wrote the grant application. And originally, like I reported earlier, Lexington and Buena Vista were going to be partners in this grant. However, we were not eligible because we already have full coverage that exceeds the 25 over three megabits per second threshold. So the grants will be awarded in late October and the, the project, if chosen, will take 17 months to implement. So keep your fingers crossed. That really will be amazing for, for the county if that goes through.
Somewhat transformational and soon we get the money, hope we can get the materials to, to implement it, with that being an issue. Any questions for Ms. Strawn?
Which regions of the county are being targeted for this expansion?
You know what? I brought a map if you want, and it's mostly in the southern parts of the county, but I'll pass this along if y'all would like to take a look. of the county, but I'll pass this along if y'all would like to take a look.
Thank you, Ms. Strawn.
We'll just say the RANA portion of it is Long Forge Road and Mechanicsville, but there's, BARK is covering most of it.
Very good. Get the county lit up with fiber, the positive thing. For my report, I primarily have what I consider celebrations in no particular order. While out on the town last night, ran into some folks that were visiting from Maryland, the Horse Center, and I was elated to learn that the State of Maryland Horse Show is being held in Lexington, Virginia. So congratulations to the Horse Center and Glenn Petty and the good work that's going on out there. Also, congratulations to Buena Vista for another successful Labor Day. It was warm and a slow-moving parade this year, but good to get out and celebrate and always fun to tip the hat to the bagpipes from VMI. They do a great job. And also want to congratulate Courtney May on starting Electric Pilates. It's been in motion for quite some time and a lot of trials and tribulations, but Electric Pilates is now open and taking customers. And being across the street from the Southern Inn Building, a big thank you to the Maharris family, who is in the process of painting the Southern Inn Building and so far it looks terrific. I think they're on the final stretch. The painters have done a great job. And lastly, congratulations to Public Works and also the city schools and all the schools in our community for a successful open and doing a great job of keeping in-person circumstances. And you may have noticed perhaps that there are a few potholes around town. Jeff and his team are doing all they can to keep up with them, but the crater in front of there by Blue Sky and the library, which had grown to about six or eight inches, was filled on Monday. So it's smooth sailing through that intersection at Route 60 and grateful to Jeff and his work or his team for all the work that they do in keeping our city safe and water flowing. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on some of what the mayor commented on, Columbia Gas is still working in the city and we know there are many rough stretches of the road because of that work. We are commenting and calling Columbia Gas to help them repair those stretches, temporary patching, that is, when we find them. At this point in time, we do not have an estimate of when work will conclude, so we'll put up with those temporary patches for a bit longer, but when they do finish the job, all the stretches of road they have disturbed will have acceptable, complete, permanent patches on those areas. A little update on the regional jail. Good news, the jail has been given 100% inspection, renewal for their security inspection and audit, and the leadership of the jail and the staff did a great job of providing the support and practical implementation of their policies during the past year to make that a success in the jail. So they have great security there. Some conversations about the skate park. Jeff Martone and I met with proponents of the improvement to the skate park earlier this week and their number one priority is resurfacing the asphalt base of the park. Of course, we all know that there is money that was put in reserve for the skate park maintenance several years ago from the fundraising and that was about $5,000. As Jeff and I looked at the cost of that and that being their number one priority, they indicated they would do additional fundraising and if that is the case, we believe we can, with that money that's reserved for the skate park, resurface that park. And then any kind of additional fundraising they do or any other equipment they desire to place on that property would be only at the, with the approval of the city. They understood that completely. They are very appreciative that we would consider anything at all. I think we've got a good conversation starting. They indicated that they have a list of, I haven't seen it yet, but a list of 65 people who say they do skate regularly and would like to skate at the park and I'll have that as long, as well as other information before we take any additional steps to spend any city money on that. But at this point, the money that they are raising or have been raised, have raised in the past, is available for that repaving. So we'll try and get that done later this fall when our paving folks come back. A little update on the fire department and I wanted to give a heartfelt thank to Captain Dickerson and his staff. Many of you were there last week when he and the department provided an excellent memorial service for the victims and the heroes of the 9/11 experience 20 years ago. So as always, they've done a great job there remembering those folks. The department, along with the police department, gave a presentation at Waddell Elementary School on the importance of community helpers last week. Update on our election laws. New change in the election laws now prohibits any firearms other than law enforcement within a 40-foot exclusion zone from the entrance of the polling place. So all citizens should be on notice of this exclusion zone when visiting city hall and parking areas directly behind the building during their election period. Little update from the police department. Chief Green met with the Fifty Ways Rockbridge to discuss the extensive training and certifications officers complete on an annual basis, an item that the chief and Fifty Ways thought may have merit to pursue, would be some increased training and awareness for cultural diversity. No specific plans, but it was just a general topic that could be improved for training in the city. All uniformed staff recently completed the ALIS refresher training and that's active shooter training. During the month of August, the department performed 129 patrols of our schools and 126 patrols downtown. Some people may be hearing that unfortunately the department has suffered from a number of departures of fully-trained officers in the recent months. Today, the department is now four positions from being fully staffed. Since the end of May, we have received only four applications for these positions and none of the applicants is a certified officer. The important piece of information to understand here is none of the applicants are certified. By law, only certified officers can actually do police work in Virginia. In order to become certified, an individual must first attend a six-month police academy offered only in January and July. The candidates we are interviewing today cannot even patrol with LPD officers until next July, after they receive LPD orientation on policies and practices in Lexington, riding with a current officer for several months. Roughly a year will pass before any new hires who are not certified can begin to patrol within the city. This is a difficult burden for our remaining staff at the department as shifts will be short of staff and overtime and call-ins will increase substantially. Of course, should any additional officers leave for any reason, we then will see even greater concerns arising to maintain minimum staffing levels. While it's only an informed position, I believe that the shortage of law enforcement candidates we're seeing is the beginning of changes seen throughout the country in attracting new people into law enforcement. So I compliment all of our officers in the police department for their commitment, continued work for the city. Speaking of construction and some of the ongoing issues we've had in our streets, the Lee Avenue Water Line, when we experienced that break a few weeks back, many people have noticed that there are a lot of, due to the repairs, are a lot of holes, disturbance to pavement and wondered if we should be repaving the entire street from Nelson to Preston Street. I, in fact, had asked our supervisor or director of Public Works, Jeff Martone, that question about a week and a half ago. He said we should not because we will soon be undertaking the Jackson Street Water and Sewer Project in about two years and we'll probably go right back under that pavement, that new pavement and rip it all up. So unfortunately, we'll just have to bear what we have for a couple of years. We will be making some substantial temporary fixes, but we will not be repaving the whole street because of that circumstance. Another bit of good news is our revenue updates and I'm pleased to say that throughout the current fiscal year, our revenues continue to trend upward and that is for July and August. We have those revenue figures. Meals, sales and lodging taxes have been very robust and of course this could change, but at this time, we are obviously very pleased with what we're seeing and they exceed our budget estimates in most of our major categories. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor, council, if there's any questions?
Mr. Alligood?
Thank you. One of the things that I noticed in this week's News Gazette newspaper was the report about the Rockbridge Area Health Center having 100% COVID vaccination and I thought fantastic. And one of the questions that continues to circulate around is the vaccination rate of the population. And one of the areas, of course, is the vaccination rate for all of our city workers and whatnot. I was wondering how we stand and what that vaccination rate, the percentage of people who have been vaccinated or conversely have not been.
I could not give you an exact percentage there. You know, we have not polled our city workers. My belief is that nearly 100% are in city hall are vaccinated. It's substantially lower in police, fire and public works. Talking to both the police and fire chief, I believe we're probably in about the 60% range in both of those departments and public works is lower than that. So, you know, we don't go out and ask employees if they are vaccinated. They're supposed to wear a mask if they are not and based on observation, that's about what we're seeing.
Right. And I know it's going to be a point of continuing conversation in the short term. One of the items I read in the national news today is about, deals with employer mandates and the discussion of employer mandates being a way forward on that, but thank you very much for the information.
Piggyback on that for something for council to think about or the city manager to contemplate. I think it was Norfolk State University that I read, all students were, who were vaccinated and brought proof of their vaccination card, received a $500 payment and all faculty and staff received a $1,000 payment as incentive to get the vaccination. I don't know if that's something that makes sense for our city, but would encourage, if there's no objection from council for city manager and attorney to contemplate something of that nature to encourage people or in reward and it wouldn't be the people that just, that have not yet. It would be for everyone who has, brings a valid, whether they were vaccinated last year or last week or next week from that standpoint.
I think that would be an interesting conversation to have if that's the right thing. Using taxpayer dollars to reward people for protecting the people around them and themselves. So I look forward to that conversation.
Certainly.
Certainly, these are critical times and the infrastructure requires critical employees and to not have employees available, I'm just thinking, what happened to that water main break on, what was it, Lee Street? What if? I'm thinking further, I'm on the MSA board, a very small organization there, what if? You know, how long can you operate a water and sewer system without employees? Thank you.
Unique circumstances necessitate unique solutions, to be sure. Any other questions for the city manager? Hearing none. City attorney?
I have no report tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions council might have.
Very good. Hearing no questions and not aware of any new business that anyone wanted to bring forward and we have no closed session. So unless there's an objection, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all for your good work and we look forward to seeing you in October.